Welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Regular Board Meeting, July 18th, 2024. I'm going to ask everyone to silence their phone, but I'll ask everybody on the dais to introduce themselves first.
Chrissy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Herby, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Holly Chrisman, Assistant County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. We start every meeting with silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us in silent prayer. Amen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to excuse Commissioner Stephanie Summer Odomas.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
All right, we got a couple of presentations today, a couple of proclamations. And the first proclamation, recognizing National Deflection Week.
I'll go ahead and start, we do have a number of members from the QRT here, so we'll call on you in a second. But this is, as you say, a proclamation recognizing National Deflection Week, whereas the Hamilton County Quick Response Team is a national model in voice in the field of deflection, and whereas the third week of July is designated as National Deflection Week to be held annually across the country.
Whereas the Quick Response Team of its kind launched in Colrain Township in 2015, and there are now approximately 1,600 deflection sites in the United States, including those in Hamilton County through the Quick Response Team Initiative. Whereas, deflection is a critical element in the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, 2024 National Drug Control Strategy to combat the nation's opioid and fentanyl epidemic.
And whereas, deflection is an early upstream approach that does not wait for nor need an arrest, overdose, crisis, or situation before taking action for people, families, and youth facing the challenges of drug use, misuse, addiction, mental health issues, and their related consequences. And whereas, the deflection continues to grow rapidly as a community-led, public safety, and public health strategy that offers police and communities alike a third option instead of arrest or inaction when it is clear that a person needs help and support.
Whereas, Hamilton County deflects individuals through six distinct pathways: self-referral, active outreach, intervention, prevention, post-overdose response, and community-based response, allowing individuals to rapidly connect, be connected to treatment, housing, and services to achieve recovery. Whereas, since its founding in April 2018, the Hamilton County Quick Response Team has received over 10,000 inbound referrals for over 6,000 unique residents in Hamilton County.
And whereas, deflection saves public dollars, reduces drug-related crime, and reduces overdose deaths, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners declares and proclaims July 14th through July 20th, 2024, to be known as National Deflection Week 2024 in all of Hamilton County. So, and before you speak, Megan?
Yes.
Let me just say that this is a national model started in Colrain Township, and the idea is to make sure that anybody that has an overdose, if they don't take the transport to the hospital, and so we lose the opportunity to do the direct handoff to treatment and long-term recovery, we're trying to capture those individuals through the Quick Response Team. And so these individuals go out, it's oftentimes appear in a law enforcement person within a window of time where the person might be inclined to seek treatment and recovery, and try to just talk to that person and try to get them in that space. Doesn't always work the first time out, but the QRT goes often to try to get these folks into treatment. And so it is just something that Hamilton County is very proud of. I was just at a national conference, I texted Megan while I was sitting in a session, and they were talking about this deflection model, and I'm like, oh, a deflection model, and I'm listening, I'm like, oh, Lord, that's the Quick Response Team, and it was, they were talking about the Quick Response Team. But, so others are using this model to save lives and get people into treatment and long-term recovery. So, we've got a really robust team here in Hamilton County, very grateful for all the work that you do. So with that, Commissioner Reese, I don't know if you have additional comments, but anxious to hear from Megan and the team.
Yes, thank you, I just echo what was just said, and so Megan, you guys have done a great job, so I'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, thank you so much, I'm joined here today with Master Sergeant Trooper Sharice Williams, she's with the Ohio State Patrol, and one of our newest peer navigators, Sophie Malakoo. And the two of these lovely ladies, they're phenomenal, run our African-American outreach program as part of the Quick Response Team, so you talked through the proclamation about non-arrest pathways into care, and that is one of the many ways that our Quick Response Team is trying to get individuals into treatment. And so, our African-American outreach program launched in October of 2021. We've referred and linked over 1,600 unique African-American individuals and residents in Hamilton County to care, which has been just phenomenal outreach that this team is doing. And would have loved to bring the whole team here today, but we are actually doing two deflection outreach events. We had one yesterday over at the Justice Center Plaza, we had over 950 engagements, gave out over 200 free meals. We did it in partnership with the 513 Relief Bus, and they are actually out in Mount Helfie today until 2 o'clock at the Emmanuel Temple Apostolic Church, if anyone's interested. And our team is out there doing some great outreach again today, and doing that in partnership with the African-American Engagement Work Group, and so just really excited about the amazing partnership that we have in this community, this deflection work would not be possible without them, and certainly the hard work of our co-responder team, so thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
We're going to come around.
Take a picture.
Take a picture. Our next proclamation, recognizing July as Disability Pride Month. Whereas Disability Pride Month is observed in July to celebrate the value and dignity of individuals with disabilities, promoting a positive image of disability as a natural and beautiful aspect of human diversity. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was enacted on July 26, 1990, representing a milestone in the journey toward equality, prohibiting discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life, including jobs, schools, transportation, and all public and private places open to the public. Whereas Disability Pride Month offers an opportunity for the community to learn about the history of disability rights, celebrate the progress made, and reaffirm the principle that disability is a part of human diversity and enriches our community.
And whereas, individuals with disabilities constitute a significant portion of the population, contributing to the social, economic, and cultural vitality of our community through their diverse talents and perspectives. And whereas, Hamilton County recognizes the importance of fostering an inclusive community that supports the beliefs and prospects of all residents regardless of their abilities, and through education, dialogue, and celebration, we can combat stigma and discrimination, empowering individuals with disabilities to embrace their identities with pride. And whereas, Hamilton County encourages businesses, institutions, and organizations to observe Disability Pride Month by promoting accessibility, inclusion, and recognizes Disability Pride Month and honors the resilience, achievements, and contributions of people with disabilities, advocating for a society that values diversity, equity, and inclusion for all.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, hereby extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to the Disability Pride Committee for their invaluable contributions to Hamilton County and unwavering dedication to empowering Hamilton County residents with disabilities to embrace their identities with pride. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim July 2024 be known as Disability Pride Month in all of Hamilton County. Now I'll open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you, I'm very excited to be celebrating people with disabilities in our community. As has been said, there is so much vitality in the community, and the diversity that you lend to make us a richer culture, a richer community is something we're all grateful for, so thank you all, there's a large contingent here today. We have many organizations represented that are in support of people with disabilities, so I'm grateful that you're all here, thank you for your presence, and we're thrilled to honor all that you contribute to our community.
Thank you, I want to also echo thanking all of the organizations that are here. People with disabilities is the number one minority group in the country, and it's so important. You have lots of disabilities and why people have disabilities. I will say that my mother went from wearing six-inch heels and entrepreneur woman to one day getting MS, and we didn't know what it was, it was on Christmas Day. We were blind in one eye, we thought it was, oh, you need to go to the eye doctor, but you go, next thing we know, 30 days later, she's on a cane, and she can't hold her balance, and we're like, what is going on? So finally, she was diagnosed with MS, and then 30 more days later, she couldn't feel her whole left side, and then 10 days later, she was in a wheelchair. Had no idea that that would be, she's going to be in a wheelchair. And so, learned a lot from even going shopping and how the clothes hit you when you're in the wheelchair. When I was, this is all when I was on city council, we didn't have a lot of the curbs that we have now. I was happy to work with the organizations with disabilities and fight for that to be the law. Back then, we didn't have Uber, we were in taxicabs, we passed a law for taxicabs, because a lot of taxicabs were passing up people with disability. So I learned a whole lot, her going through that, through her lens and other lens, folks with lens. She had a house that was not built for, everything she wanted was like anti-disabilities, like a sunken-in living room, like, no, that's like, you know, two steps to get in the house, and she's like, no, I don't want to ruin my house, like, Mom, no, you have to be able to get around. So we learned a lot of stuff from cooking to all these different things that I learned from that lens, and so I'm very happy to have this resolution, but I'm even more happy that our board, we had a big Disability Pride, if you will, Day with the 513 Relief Bus, and parents and people coming out who didn't know some of the services that are available to them, and that was a major hit, and then I'm excited that we, as we talk about affordable housing, very excited about working with LAD and coming out with a housing product that will be groundbreaking. So, this board is definitely dedicated to making sure the county is accessible, and as I said in my state of the county, one Hamilton County, and that includes a county that's accessible for all citizens, so excited about this. Kristen is here, are you going to come up and represent?
Hi.
Hi.
First of all, let me say what an honor it is to be in front of you all doing a speech for the disabled community. My name is Kristen Sahl, and I am disabled. I'm so excited to be here for this historic event, formally recognizing and celebrating people with disabilities in Hamilton County. I want to start by thanking LAD, the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, the organization and advocates gathered here today. When I first came to LAD, a 50-year-old organization that supports people with developmental disabilities, I had been through some rough living situations. I had no idea not only would I find a safe home, I would also find a community that encourages me and demands more to advocate for being fully seen and included. Today, I get to see disabled celebrated through the Hamilton County, and I get to witness the county make a commitment to embrace and include all people. We stand on the backs of other disability advocates, their families, their supporters, who have been through the history, have demanded more, people who have held sit-ins, lawsuits, and crawled up the steps of the nation's Capitol demanding that we have the right to enter buildings, live in the community, vote, receive education, and have jobs that pay fair wages. For as long as I live, I will continue living this fight through people to be fully seen and included in our communities. Thank you to everyone here, everyone who came before me, my mom, all other people at LAD who have helped me achieve my goals, and our elected representatives who believe and show that all people have the ability and value. I'm truly proud and honored to be a part of Disabled Pride Month. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you. So we have a proclamation, but I do have one card here for someone who wanted to speak about disabled, so I just wanted to let them come up for me, do the proclamation. Jessica?
Yes, I need to do a proclamation first.
Proclamation first, okay.
Okay.
We got to take a picture. Okay, now we'll get to public comment. Jessica Scully? She's bringing one to you.
And Commissioner Reese, what you said initially about your mother having MS, that's been my life, majority of my life, when I'm 63 years old. And the reason why I'm here is because it needs to be said. What does Disability Pride mean to me? It means being able to be treated fairly, it means having transportation for the disabled community. Without transportation, the disabled community are prisoners in their own home. With transportation, the disabled community is able to have jobs, attend events throughout the city, and see friends and family, and have a daily existence out in the world. Something needs to be, something that needs to be considered is sensitivity training for the people they serve that get public money, you know, jobs and family services, Hamilton County DDS, senior services, they need to live the life of someone with a disability to understand that there's no transportation, you have a job and they don't show up. You have an attendant that doesn't show up, time after time after time. Have a Medicaid fraud happen, when I'm receiving IWA waiver services through Hamilton County DDS, and it happened for two and a half years. So the people paying the bills in Hamilton County are as guilty as the vendors that was doing it. Over $100,000 of Medicaid money was stolen from Hamilton County. So every week when the invoices were sent in, they paid them, they knew the fraud was going on, but nothing was done to them. So it's a problem for me, that I have to live like this and do this constantly. How can a disabled have pride without having freedom? What will the county do about this? Because it's upsetting to me. They keep on shrinking regular bus routes, which affects every single solitary resident in Hamilton County. For your mother, it's a short period of time, for some of us, it's all of our lives. And Hamilton County wants to send the ADA, and we can promote disabled? How can you, when there's no transportation? I've been told by a social worker at Hamilton County DDS, I was not entitled to transportation. So who do I tell? They won't do anything about it? You know, I've been alone, I've attended three nights in a row, they didn't do anything about it? So it's upsetting to me. I want something to change for those that need it. Because they're not changing for me in my lifetime? But they need to change it to have people, I've gone to public meetings where they want to die, they want their adult children to just look to die because the services are just screwed up in Hamilton County. How do you think I feel? Feel that? Geez, I had a parent that wasn't being independent, and I was, I have been. I worked as an accountant at UC for 18 years, so I was independent at one point. So these progressives, I can't do it anymore, this is the life that I have, that's shitty. And I get sick of now doing this, time after time after time, and I've been here way too many times. And I've even gone to Governor Dewine in the pouring rain, the Commissioners, or sorry, seeing Governor Dewine in pouring rain during the COVID-19, I don't care. That's how I think I feel as a disabled person, seeing to expose a problem that exists, and doesn't care that it exists, and those are supposed to make sure that disabled aren't thinking about it.
Thank you for your comments, I'm sorry the time is.
I know that.
I apologize for that.
You got my number, I expect something to be done, I want help with the problem that exists. And I see that exists, that no one cared about. It still happens today, and it's totally about it, it's upsetting to me.
Thank you for your comment, our administration has gotten the information, and thank you. Larry Falcon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Larry Falcon, a resident of Hamilton County. I'm here to talk to you today about the impervious surface fee for Metropolitan Sewer District. A quick reminder of the history, this was first brought forward by the Rate Affordability Task Force in 2016, eight years ago. They reported to you that ordinary residents of MSD Service territory are overpaying on their sewer bills because stormwater charges are taking up half of their budget, and the people who contribute to that stormwater are paying nothing. And this body, the Hamilton County Commissioners, created a stakeholder advisory group in 2019 to gather information and bring it back to the Commissioners with a recommendation. And yes, there's been a pandemic in the meantime, but there's been five years of behind-the-scenes work and no visible progress. So I'm here today just to encourage you to revisit the issue of an impervious surface fee and look seriously at rate restructuring for MSD, this will be an ongoing conversation. My time here today is just opening the conversation. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for your comment. Commissioner Treehouse, I'd like to advance, if that's okay. I'd like for us to advance the item. Trying to find it. Holly, what number is the item dealing with the levy?
Items 1 and 2, under the regular agenda.
Thank you, I'd like to advance items 1 and 2. Can you bring us up to speed?
Absolutely, Commissioner, thank you. Yes, items 1 and 2 on your agenda are the ballot resolutions for the Family Services and Treatment Levy and Developmental Disabilities Levy. These resolutions, excuse me, these resolutions are the final items for board consideration on the 2024 levy review. The Tax Levy Review Committee began their six-month review process in January, and these recommendations were brought before the board in June, and the board held additional public hearings on July 1st and 2nd to hear from the community. The Tax Levy Review Committee's recommendation for both levies and the ballot resolutions for consideration today call for no increase in either levy. Both are renewals of current levy millage. If approved, both of these levies will appear on the November 5th, 2024 ballot for renewal. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you, I thank you, Holly, for laying a baseline for this conversation. So, we've talked a number of times about this issue, putting that this is the final step to get this levy language on the ballot. So I will reiterate a little bit of what I usually say, which is a big thank you to the TLRC for doing so much work, they're all volunteers, they have certain levels of expertise in different areas, and we're so grateful that they're willing to spend the time and energy to get us to this point related to both of these levies, they do really good work. Gwen McFarland, being the chair of that organization, and Lisa Webb, who is with the county, who just spends inordinate amounts of time getting these in front of us. I'm really, I'm grateful for her work. So, as we all know, these are on flat this year, so whereas Yens, it won't raise your taxes, as the billboards always say, but I don't want it to go without saying how important the services are to the people in this community related to both of these levies, the Family Services Levy and also the DD Levy. So, I am thrilled to support both of these, I think it is appropriate, given some of the information that we have received in previous meetings related to the balances and the nature of the work that's going on with the levies, that they both go on flat this year, and so I'm happy to support that. But I do, again, want to reiterate how important these are to the community and grateful for the folks that are in the audience to be in support of these levies as well. So thank you all for being here and looking forward to voting on these two items.
Thank you, I also want to thank TLRC as well as all of the organizations. I want to thank all the folks that came out to our, we had our town hall meeting on this, or if you will, public hearing, those who came out, both to the Board of Elections, that came down. We heard some powerful, very real stories of what these levies do and mean to people here in Hamilton County. And TLRC and everyone came back and said, we're not recommending any type of increase, but if we could have some stabilization. And so today is, on the agenda is to vote on, putting it on the ballot that will be decided by the voters of Hamilton County, but with something that does not raise your taxes. Those powerful stories that we heard from people and the effects and the good work that the organizations are doing is, I thought was amazing. It really, really, really touched me, a lot of people that came and were bold enough to share their personal stories. And so, I'm happy to put this on the ballot so the voters can have a decision, but also putting it on the ballot where it's flat, it's not a raise. So, I think TLRC was very thoughtful, very balanced, understanding that we need to continue, but understanding that going above might be a but understanding that going above might be a little difficult for folks at this time. And so I just thought they brought a balanced approach to us, and I'm happy to move forward to put this on the ballot today. So I have a motion to approve items one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you for your work.
All right. We'll move now to any motions, comments from Commissioners, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. A couple of items. I mentioned the national conference that I attended last weekend. It was the National Association of County Officials. It was held in Tampa. I mentioned it when we were kicking off, or did the ribbon cutting for the convention center, because it was so striking to be in a convention center that is attractive and serves the purpose, and then come home to a convention center that does none of the above. And so at the ribbon cutting, I was happy to reference that and glad that Cincinnati is finally in a position to renovate our current convention center, get it up to snuff, and set ourselves up for expansion and further programming in the future. So went to the conference. A couple of sessions that I attended, and you know, they've got many, many sessions, but I went to one related to housing, because it's such a high priority for the Commission. And so we talked about more funding for housing, which is something that this board has done and we're sensitive to, but also strategies, policy strategies, that don't cost anything, but rather change policies related to housing, incentivizing people to come in and develop housing in the county. So there's like a 10-point list. I'm going to study it myself. I've had a cursory look at it, share it with the administration, and see if there's anything there that makes sense for Hamilton County. But it was really an interesting session, and there were people from all over the country there, so I was happy to attend that. And then the second one I went to, I went to a bunch of them, but the second most important was about the opioid settlement, because people all over the country have gotten these opioid dollars. And there were three counties represented talking about how they're spending those dollars. So it was interesting to learn what other communities are doing. I'm proud to say that Ohio, we are right on target, and Hamilton County in particular, related to putting these dollars on the ground where they matter the most, and helping people that are suffering with addiction. So interesting, though, conversation about some of these statewide dollars and where they're landing. So happy to share that with the One Ohio Foundation when the opportunity presents itself. So as I mentioned, went to the groundbreaking for the convention center. It was very exciting. Really grateful for the partnership with the City of Cincinnati, with 3CDC, with the port. There are many, many partners involved in the convention center renovations, and I was glad to be there to kick it off. Also went to an event last night for Main Street, or was that two nights ago, Commissioner? I don't remember. You were there as well, for Main Street Ventures. It was their 25th anniversary. Thanks to Sean Parker, who's the executive director, for the invite to go celebrate all the work they're doing with entrepreneurs, kind of launching entrepreneurs into their futures. So I was really glad to help celebrate that. And then lastly, I went to an event last night for Black Tech Week, went up to Esoteric and got a tour of the Mortar Building. So Mortar is this great organization that's been based in OTR, again, launching entrepreneurs, especially African-American and minority-owned businesses. And they have a new space up in Walnut Hills. It's pretty cool. It used to be a bank, and it's near People's Corner up there. And so I got a tour. Yvette Simpson, who is, I think, the chair of their board, took us through, and Alan Woods was there. He's the CEO of Mortar. And so it's really exciting. They've been in operation for 10 years, which really surprised me, because I always view them as so young and new, but they've done really good work, and many, many entrepreneurs and businesses have launched because they got the business coaching that they needed through Mortar. So anyway, was really happy to take a look at that and encourage them to, you know, if they want a proclamation for the groundbreaking, we'll be right there for Mortar. So that's all I have, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Yes, was also, like you said, at Main Street Ventures. And Sean Parker, I'm extremely proud of him. He's been a mentee of mine, and just has done phenomenal. He's done a lot of work. He's went, he was at Procter &amp; Gamble, then Fifth Third Bank, Kroger, Nike. But he said his passion after doing all that was to bring that knowledge back to helping entrepreneurs. Main Street Ventures was important to me because their board chair, George, he and I started out, they called it the fast break. We had the fast break initiative. We were called the Young Guns. One of the things came out of that was Main Street Ventures. And so for me to be able to see these things continue and grow after you kind of get things started is just amazing. So it was great seeing George there. We had some other things. We had TAF as a technology school that came out of that project. The Cincinnati Development Fund came out of that. So yeah, we were just some young people who had these big dreams. We were gonna break this, we're gonna take on Silicon Valley. That's what we were, our goal was at the time. But to see it go on and then be in the hands of someone like Sean Parker, taking it to the next level, was just, it was just amazing and a proud moment for me. Also, this past weekend, I went to Augusta, South Carolina for what's called the Peach Jam. It is like the Super Bowl of AAU basketball, the number-one players in the country. And for me to see a kid that is ninth grade, is already listed as one of the top players, and is already six foot eight in ninth grade. But the thing that I wanted to see were two things, and that's one, because I'm pushing for an amateur sports facility, is different than recreation facility. I saw where Nike came into Augusta, South Carolina, and went into one of their sports facility, and it's a one-week takeover. One team, and I went to see my nephew, by the way, Jalen Risa, because he's number 20th in the nation going into his senior year, in his last appearance at Peach Jam. First of all, there's 150 college coaches at each game. I mean, everybody was there. UC head coach there, Xavier head coach there, but it goes on. Arkansas, I mean, the who's who of schools are in the building to watch these kids to get scholarships. The event is a whole week. They're still down there playing. I only could go a couple days. But to see this facility, first of all, Augusta, South Carolina, so the only reason we coming down there is for this Peach Jam. And they've got all of the high schools. Then you go down, I ran it to Ozzy. I said, "Ozzy, what are you doing here?" He's down the street at the other sports facility. It's a takeover. And one team, one team program for one week, they spent $30,000 in hotel stays. That's just one. And they got 50, only the top 50 teams get to come in this thing. So when you start multiplying that, and then they had catering and food, and, I mean, we had to go to the restaurant and eat. I mean, when you're looking at all this money coming, I would never probably go to Augusta, South Carolina, but I went down there because it's the Peach Jam. And so I ran it to one of the top guys of the EYBL, which is one of the top, you have to really be top-notch to get into that arena, with Nike. Said, "Oh yeah, we'd love to do something in Hamilton County." But I ain't got nothing to offer. He was talking about 2025. I ain't got nothing to offer. So when I talk about this amateur sports, there's two things that's still moving and grooving. Music and sports. Parents are spending this money, I mean, I'm just Auntie. I don't went down there and spent a bunch of money. I love you, my nephew, but this stuff is costing me. But families are coming down. Families are there. So that's what I mean when I say we need an amateur sports. We have big facilities, but then when the season's over, we ain't got nothing. Right now, there's nothing going on over there, pay corps. You know, we need to now start having stuff where every, I'm talking about every week, they got tournaments, tournaments, tournaments. Softball, basketball, volleyball, it's a lot of that. And I'm not willing to give it up to Hamilton, Ohio. I'm trying to get Hamilton County. Now, the CVB, I had heard, got on the radio station, and they asked them about the amateur sports, and they said, "Oh, we want to get that to Newport." I'm being clear, I don't want to give it to Newport. I want it right here, because I believe Hamilton County got some of the best amateur athletes in the country. And then I want all them coaches, because UC can't get everybody. Xavier can't have everybody. You know, they only got so many scholarships. There's other schools. I want them running in, they were, I mean, they were Augusta, South Carolina. All these coaches running in, they just left Vegas, running to Augusta. Come on. So that's what I'm looking for when I say we need an amateur sports facility in Hamilton County, so all these coaches can be here for our kids. And then we can bring more tourism every single day. So I do disagree with the plan that I heard on the radio, that we're gonna give this to Newport, Kentucky. And oh, by the way, we'll get some hotel stays overflow. We're not looking just for the hotel stays. We want the college coaches, we want the marketing, we want all of that, right here. So I'm glad that we're looking into it, but I hope we're not slow-walking the county's thing, and then somebody else takes, "Well, let's slow-walk the county," and we keep studying and studying, and then Newport, and then everybody get over there. It's regional. I ain't regional. I'm Hamilton County. I want the money here. I want our kids getting the scholarships. So when I saw that, I really have re-energized myself, and here I am with the guy from Nike, and we could get him here, and I ain't got nothing off. So that's what I mean by that. And this year, this week really intensified us, because I know we have a lot to offer. I mean, Augusta, South Carolina is nice, but we got a lot to offer too. Second reason, Augusta, South Carolina is right across from Augusta, Georgia, and I got to see the James Brown statue. So I did get to see the statue and take a picture. And I saw a lot of the students down there taking pictures. Said, "We want all the students to come and go to the Black Music Walk of Fame and take pictures." But it was great, and they did have some good food. I gotta give them that. So I had a chance to do that. Secondly, I wanted to say that the Veterans Appreciation Day, I'm super excited. We've come a long way. And we're partnering, and we've got over 67 partners, and 2,000 people registered. I'm just, 3,000, oh, you up to 3,000, Anson? Okay, 3,000 people registered. We got 1,000 left to get some food, but we will accept some people coming that have not registered. But this is historic. In 234 years, we've never had this. And we're gonna go into, and we've never used the community days in the contracts. Now, the contract gotta get a little better, because, you know, they try to get us on food and beverage, but we've never used these community days. They threw it in the contract just to show that they doing something, but nothing ever happened. So I'm so glad that we're utilizing and seeing how it works, the community day. A lot of people have been to the Great American Ballpark, but there's some people who have no money to buy a ticket. They can't go to the game. So this might be their first time. We're gonna have free tours. We're gonna have free food. We're gonna have 67 partners, not to be out there just passing out business cards. We're talking actionable. No more getting on the telephone and they putting you on hold. No more, can you send me an email? You'll be face-to-face to create a relationship. And I'm so excited. I saw my buddy from the DAV, he's super excited. So everybody's excited. Veteran Services Commission is excited. We're excited. It's gonna be incredible. And I just think what better name than the Great American Ballpark, and these people who served America will be there. So please get the word out. Starts at 10:00 a.m. We end properly at 2:00 p.m. This for veterans, their families, their widows. Come on out. And free bus rides from Metro that day, and free parking. I think we're the only board that ever offered free parking. We did it for the Black Music Walk of Fame, we doing it for this. So I'm just super excited. And everybody who's working on Anson, the entire team, the entire committee, it's good to see the vision come to reality, because I just had a thought, but now it's gonna be real. So we're excited about that, and our board will be there as well, and this is big for Hamilton County. The other thing I wanted to, that's this Saturday. The other thing I wanted to put on our agenda is the following Saturday, so we're going back-to-back with Hamilton County. Following Saturday, the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame celebrates one year. I can't even believe it's been one year. But that's gonna be on July 27th. We're gonna have a special parade of stars at 11:00 a.m., so everybody meet in front of the Black Music Walk of Fame. Marion Way asks you to wear white. It's all free, but you'll get to march in. You'll get to be the star. I'll do it in New Orleans style. It's gonna be great. And then, of course, we've got a great lineup of music, and our inductees, we're excited about them. And then have the induction ceremony, and then a free concert by Zap. So our inductees this year are Randy Crawford, Shirley Murdoch, Donald Lawrence, and Tribute to the Late Roger Troutman, and Zap. So again, it's free. And I was, when I was on the plane, the craziest thing, a stewardess sat me down. She said, "I'm from Cincinnati, but I live in Atlanta. I've been living in Atlanta." She says, "But I've got my white outfit, and I'm gonna be at that parade." I said, "What? How did you find out about it?" So it's gonna be a great, great time, and we're inviting everyone to come out. My last comment is, the Cincinnati Music Festival is next week. It is the largest annual, not just one time, largest annual festival in Hamilton County. Brings in over $107 million of economic impact each year. Last year, it brought in $9.6 million in hotel revenue on our side, and that's not even with the best lineup. This year is supposed to be a better lineup. What I do want to say, though, is that I want us to be a welcoming, a welcoming city and county. And I will tell you that the hotel rates are out of this world. Out of this world. They make you buy two rooms, you must pay upfront, everybody had to pay by July 16th, and the rates are 600, 700, and now they up to $999. One of the artists can't even find a room, I was told. Now, we go in and we take the money, but the question is, are we welcoming? This is not the weekend for streets to be closed off, construction to begin. Always got a title up, excuse the mess, excuse the dust, we're remodeling. If we're remodeling, we should have been remodeled for this crowd who've been coming for 52 years. And when we get the money, we put it in the convention facilities fund, and that goes to helping with convention centers and so forth, but we never reinvested until now into anything back into the black community. And that's what pays for the Walk of Fame. That's why I fought so hard, because if we bring in $9.6 million, we can at least take a million and put back into the Black Music Walk of Fame, because all the people coming are 98% black, which still leaves us with $8.6 million to do all the other things that we do. Now, we didn't do that. We only took $350,000. So then the CVB came in and said, "We need the money." Well, I was disappointed that my staff went to a meeting, an organizing meeting, and the CVB was there, and they had a flyer about all the exciting things that they're gonna promote. And there were some exciting things. But the Black Music Walk of Fame, which is a county, it'll be a county asset, we using county money to give to them, they don't have it on here at all. Not at all. Now, don't tell me, "Oh, we did the grand opening. We give you money every year." We ain't give you money one time. So now, an event that brings in, that brings in from 98% black people, who pay the highest rates of hotels, get the least amount of service, we take their money, we put it in a fund to fund conventions, and then you come with a paperwork and don't even include the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. You kidding me? And then you go to a meeting, and I'm told that you tried to tell them to take the Black Music Walk of Fame display out of the airport, something that I negotiated, and thankful to Candace McGraw and others. Never been done before. You got a lot of corners. You got a lot of corners in the, in the, in the airport. And you going to sit there. And then the mayor had to come and tell the CEO of the CBB to stand down at a meeting. Because they kept trying to put down the Black Music Walk of Fame. They kept trying to get the stars out of the Black Music Walk of Fame. They presented paperwork of what they're promoting. And there's no Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And then we were wrestling in the budget. We're trying to, I wanted the, the Black Music Walk of Fame to get the million and leave you with 8.6 on the table. And I got voted down because you said the CBB wanted half of the money. This is the kind of stuff I'm talking about. And I didn't want to talk about it, but now I'm upset about it. Because why would you go in a meeting with the mayor and try to put down the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame? He got to get up and tell you to stand down. And you getting the county money. We got something coming next week and you ain't got the Black Music Walk of Fame on here at all. We done picked up 22,000 people without no marketing budget. We got an award. You didn't put it out. We got an award. Blavity Magazine. One of the top 11 museums and monuments in the country. You didn't put nothing out. We done won four Muse Awards. Best Design and everything. You didn't put nothing out. So we got to be talking about one set of rules. I can't fund you and then you knock down something that we have put up. It don't make sense to me. You want the money. And then you want to take all the money and put it towards something else. And I appreciate the convention centers and all that. But you can't take the money from the Music Fest, 98% black, and don't want to put one dime back into the black community. It don't make sense. The next thing I wanted to say is that we voted on TVs and remodeling of the Bengals stadium. I asked 100 times. I voted for it too. But before I voted for it, I said, will this stuff be done by Music Fest weekend? I've asked it three, four times. You can go back and get the video. Now, we get, it's embarrassing. We done voted for extra TVs. Administrator said it'd be good to do it now, get these extra TVs. Now, during the Music Festival, no TVs will be working. In those suites that people paid big money to be in. And we said, don't let the Bengals do the remodeling. We going to handle the remodeling over at the county so we can have control. Well, I don't know why we wouldn't do the, the TVs on the opposite side of the stadium. Where there is, you know, they only take half of the stadium. Why would we take out these TVs and disrespect the patrons that paid big money to be in these suites? If you got club tickets, you had to pay extra. And now when you go in the club level, they won't have no TVs up. Now, I can't go blame the Bengals. Because the Bengals ain't leading this. The county is. And then I brought this up. I brought this up to the administration. They said, we looking into it. We working. We should be able to make a phone call if we in charge. We know we got this coming. Don't put, don't take the old TVs out on this side. Get this thing working. It shouldn't be, we looking at. That's what I do if I let the Bengals be in charge of it. So I'm not happy that I voted for something that has now become disrespect to the largest event, no matter what color you are. The largest annual event that comes in here and brings all this money. And we're just allowing this to happen. Every time we show up, the roads are closed. Construction, you could have done, all this construction stuff should have started before we got here or after we leave. So it's all over the internet now. People are upset about it. And now the county, we held accountable because we the ones leading it. We're the ones leading the project management. And I'm saying, I'm not going to lead nothing that's going to cut people out. They gotta be respected. This week, the money that we're bringing, they have to be respected. If Taylor Swift was coming, I would tell you, do not take them TVs out. Do not do it. The Bengals getting ready to start? Do not take them TVs out. We got a Bengal season coming. Reds, do not take them TVs out. We got the red season starting. We got to do this stuff around these annual events. Not in the middle of it. So I've been through it. We've had a, we've had seasons where people have come in and said they've been mistreated during Music Fest weekend. And I've worked really, really hard over the years to try to change it. But I don't want us to go back to those days when the hotels are overcharging and underservicing. And those days when the city is saying, you know. And I'm sure that's why the mayor had the meeting to try to bring everybody together. But the mayor ain't got nothing to do with this Paycor Stadium not having no TV. So I talked to Holly. I'm hoping, Holly, that, I don't know where we are. Maybe you want to say something. But we got to look in this. This is a 911.
Commissioner, thank you for your comments. Yes, we were made aware of this yesterday, as, as you are aware of. And we are trying to understand what happened here and what potential steps there are to rectify. And I'll be back in touch with the board hopefully shortly.
Thank you very much. I wanted to say that because it's out there in the atmosphere. Okay, those are my comments. Going to our agenda, I'll turn it over to you, Holly.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments and then some by leave items. The first comment, Madam President, if I could echo your excitement for this Saturday's Veterans Appreciation Day. And again, to publicly thank Anson Turley, as well as Cheryl Floyd, and of course Bridgette and our entire communications team for their hard work on this event. Look forward to seeing it. And bittersweet news. I'm not sure if the board is aware that, that this is Charlie Anis's last time serving as counsel to the board as he is leaving the prosecutors off to go on to new, a new journey. And I just want to thank him and wish him the best for all of his hard work and counsel he's provided over the years. I just want to make sure the board.
Wait a minute, Charlie. I got, then I got, hold on, Charlie, I need an opinion on item number 5910. Charlie, thank you for being with us, hanging in there. And then Charlie and I got something in common. He's a coach. And so whenever we talk to sports stuff, he's like, make sure you got rugby in there. Make sure you've got these other sports in there. I was like, so thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Congratulations on your new endeavors.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie, for all your service to the county. Really appreciate it. And good luck on your next leg of your journey.
Thank you so much.
Charlie, we will be asking a lot of questions before you charge us billable hours.
Thank you, Commissioners. And the only other items I have, there are four by leaves. Two of which are a board appointment and a board change in meeting time. So Madam President, I'll defer to you if you'd like me to go through by leaves one and two first and then turn it over to the board for three and four?
Yes, that would be great.
So by leave number one is a resolution amending our American Rescue Plan Act funding to allocate an additional $400,000 to the Mortgage Assistance Program. Funding for this reallocation is recommended to come from our broadband line item, which we were going to fund two projects. We don't anticipate one moving forward. So there is a remaining balance in that line item. This $400,000 again will be allocated for JFS's purpose to provide mortgage assistance and property tax delinquency. Per board direction, they are focusing on, on the property tax delinquency given, again, like I said, board direction. And John Nelson is here to answer any specific questions you may have about the status of that program or any other detailed questions. With that, administration does recommend approval.
Thank you. Vice President, Dre House.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, John, for being here. I do have a question for you. So make your, if you don't mind, making your way to the microphone. So yeah, this was a, as you say, Holly, a high priority for the commission to provide as much mortgage assistance as we could through the ARPA dollars. So I'm glad for the reallocation. I know there is a deadline looming on this program. And I want to make sure that people are aware of that deadline. So this money is intended to not only make sure that we have enough money for those that are in the pipeline, but give us a little bit more before the deadline. But can you remind us what the deadline is?
Commissioner Dre House, we are looking at potentially an end of July, early August deadline at this point in time. The way we're administering this program is we're looking at the dollars. So it's hard to set a, a clear date. But we are purely looking at dollars as, as much as we've got. We're going to go ahead and allocate those. So as those applications come in, we look at the eligibility and we basically approve them. And so when those dollars run out, we'll in essence stop at that point of time.
Okay. But I just wanted to give folks a general idea is if they have the need, they need to apply within the next week?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the information.
I do have a question. So the city now has a mortgage assistance. Just, I just wanted to know because that might be able to help us stretch our dollars. Have we been in contact with them? So maybe if they took the city and we took the outlining areas, does that help us stretch? Or does that make any sense?
So Commissioner Reese, we have not seen any impacts of it yet. I know that the city just rolled that out very recently. So we haven't seen any change in our data yet. But part of it might be also the fact that the 513 relief bus has been in the community doing a lot of the outreach as well. So that's probably why we are getting still a, a good number of applications coming through. But I think that that's our desire is that with the city program open now that city residents have another outlet to apply for property tax relief as well.
Okay, yeah. Because my point was, do we need to shift ours to just out of the city area? Because I'm trying to get as many people. If the city handles their people and then we can handle some other, maybe we can get more, help more homeowners. I didn't know if y'all had a meeting or conversation or anything.
Commissioner Reese, that's not something we've considered yet. But I think if that's the direction of the board, we'd be happy to proceed towards that direction. So right now, the, the difference, I think, between the city program and our program is that we are also approving mortgage payments that have property taxes escrowed in it, which I don't think the city might be approving that yet. I've looked at, I've barely glanced at the city program. But my understanding is the city program is very focused on property taxes. Whereas we are looking at standalone property taxes, but also property taxes that are escrowed. That was one of the directions that we got from the board last time we were here. So we're still concentrating on both areas. So if we did turn our full attention to folks outside of the city, then we might, I don't know, we might leave people who have those escrowed accounts a little bit out in the cold. So I think just kind of staying on track where we are, at least temporarily till the city program takes hold a little bit stronger.
Okay, no problem. I'm not trying to X people out. I'm just trying to get, how do we stretch, get more people in? Can we get a report of, you know, whether the zip codes that we've been able to help people with?
Yes.
And I think that'll be helpful as we, as just as we're out and about, we kind of understand what's going on.
Absolutely, Commissioner Reese. I can get that to you in the next 24 hours.
Okay, all right, great. Well, I definitely, you know, support this. And I'm, I'm very glad that initially we had put this $5 million there. We would have really been, I think, in trouble. And because this property tax situation is out of control. And we're just trying to help stabilize until Columbus can get to a conclusion. But I still call on Governor DeWine, who appoints the Tax Commissioner to put a freeze on the property taxes so they can get it under control. So I made several calls. I haven't got a call back. I don't know why. But in the meantime, I just want to say as our county, we've been trying to put these stopgaps there. So I, I appreciate that. Well, I would put a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese? Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two, speaking of the Veterans Appreciation Day, we have a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the Cincinnati Reds to host and provide all the food, the rentals, all the other things that go on to put on a big event at the stadium. And Anson Turley is here if there's any specific questions about that agreement.
Vice President, Dre.
No, thank you, Anson, for all your work on this. I know it's a, it's a lot. It's a big event. There are many, many partners, including the VSC and others. So thank you for helping coordinate and organize all of it. I'm looking forward to the event on Saturday. It's supposed to be good weather, I think. So that's, that's a benefit. So yeah, happy to approve of by leave two.
Thank you. I'll ask Anson if he'd like to come and say a word about this exciting upcoming.
First of all, I want to thank all of the Commissioners for their support of this. This has been a wonderful project and the fact that we've had so many collaborators. So the VSC, they have been instrumental. Of course, you mentioned DAV, the Disabled Veterans. They've been a great partner and support. Just everyone has come together because we realize this is such a worthy project. And it's been an honor to be a part of it. So I'm looking forward to it too. The weather's going to be great. So anybody who's listening, come on down.
All right. Well, I make a motion to approve by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes. Commissioner, by leaves three and four are on the agenda. I think they were added by the board. So I'll defer to you if you'd like me to take those or if you would?
I'll take them. By leave three, it's a resolution appointing a member to the Southwest Ohio Regional Transit Authority, Gregory Smith. I open up, Vice President Dre House, do you have anything to say on that?
To Gregory Simpson.
Simpson, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't want to appoint the wrong person.
Well, the good, the big thing is the written part.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. No, I just, thanks to Mr. Simpson for his service to the county.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Okay, and by leave four is a resolution changing the time and location of a meeting of the Hamilton Board of Commissioners. I make a motion to approve.
Well, can I just explain a little bit on this one? So this is about the Commission on Women and Girls. This will be the meeting at which we welcome in the new cohort, the 10 women and 10 girls that will be joining the Commission on Women and Girls. And so we're going off campus at the Board of Elections at 6 o'clock at night to make sure that everybody can attend. And so it'll be on August 13th, 6 o'clock at the BOE. So I just wanted to round out why, why we're doing this one.
Make a motion to approve by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you. Holly, you want to take us to the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Is that where we at?
Yep, that's where we're at. Yep, absolutely. So for your consent agenda, item three is the Auditor's Statement of Financial Transactions for the month of June. Item four is the Resolution for the Annual Agreement with OKI, Regional Council of Governments, for their regional planning services in the amount of $272,929. Item five is a resolution adopting the 2025 tax budget estimated revenues and expenses at 1.2 billion. This is the annual requirement per the Ohio Revised Code. Item number six is a budget adjustment in the amount of just slightly over $1.9 million. This includes a transfer of funding in the Clerk of Court's Automation Fund to support hardware upgrades, a supplemental appropriation for the jail management system software upgrades in the amount of 1.5 million. This is in our capital plan. The appropriation of the Sheriff's Significant Violator Program Grant for the implementation of virtual reality-based de-escalation training. An appropriation of a sheriff's grant to focus on drug trafficking. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the agreement between the board and LISC in the amount of $2 million for our home repair loan program. This was presented to the board in April. And we're excited to be at this point. This is a split funding between ARPA in the amount of 1.3 million and CDBG funding in the amount of 700,000. We're excited that there's anticipated to be a very big public launch of this in September. So we'll keep the board posted on that. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2024 Dodge Durango as a replacement for the prosecutor's office in the amount of $43,757. a replacement for the prosecutor's office in the amount of $43,757. Item nine is a resolution accepting a credit card late fee for the Planning and Development Department in the amount of $29. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Chevy Tahoe as a replacement vehicle for the sheriff's office for $54,000. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two 2023 Dodge Chargers as replacements for the sheriff's office in the amount of $57,524. Item 12 is the bid awards and contracts authorized or executed by the Purchasing Department for the month of June, total amount of $211,219.18. Items 13 through 16 are resolutions authorizing grant agreements with the Environmental Services through the Solid Waste District. We have the first being with churches active in Northside for $61,248 to convert a walk-in refrigerator into a freezer and purchase an additional walk-in refrigerator to store surplus rescued food to redistribute through their pantry. Item 14 is with Amberly Village in the amount of $75,000 for a leaf vacuum truck to collect leaves from residents. Item 15 is with Talbert House in the amount of $14,992.30 to purchase reusable tableware and dishwashers to eliminate their disposable products. Item 16 is with the Corporation for Finley Market in the amount of $15,000 to purchase a utility vehicle to collect recycling and food waste and garbage from the market. Next items are for Job and Family Services. Item 17 is an authorization of a Memorandum of Understanding with the Public Defender's Office for guardian ad litem services, just over $1 million. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Juvenile Court for reimbursement of the 4E dependency docket services in the amount of $1.6 million. Item 19 is authorizing a Second Amendment with specialized alternatives for families and youth of Ohio for family preservation continuum services in the amount of $400,000. Item 20 is the first renewal with universal transportation systems for family and children's services transportation in the amount of just over $1.2 million. And item 21 is an agreement with Buckeye Ranch for adoptive and foster home assessments and kinship assessment services. And then items 22 through 26 are five of the seven CDAP grant agreements with political jurisdictions. These recommendations were presented to the board in late April, and the following five have been approved by the communities. The first is with Lincoln Heights in the amount of $300,000 for street improvements. Item 23 is with the City of Wyoming in the amount of $78,000 for the Wyoming-Lockland-Gateway Streetscape Improvement Project. Item 24 is with the City of Mount Healthy for $100,000 for facade improvements to five city-owned buildings in their business district. Item 25 is with the Village of Woodlawn in the amount of $64,000 to acquire and clear blighted property. And item 26 is with the Village of Merrimott for $100,000 for rehabilitation of a blighted industrial building for use by an identified end user. And then item 27 are for the Sheriff's Office reporting no objection to seven liquor permit applications. Item 28 is the monthly investment report for the month of June by the Treasurer. And item 29 is requesting travel at the county's expense for the Coroner's Office for six going to St. Louis and five to Grand Rapids, Michigan. And that's the consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Just two things. Thank you, Holly, for the description of all these items. I do want to note that items 13 through 16 are coming from the Environmental Services Solid Waste Management District. Michelle Balls is here, the Solid Waste Manager. But I think, Holly, you did a really good job of describing all of these in some detail. So I was going to ask Michelle up, but I don't know that it's necessary anymore. But I did want to highlight those and by way of the partnership with all these different organizations to try to reduce the waste that's going into landfill. So thank you, Michelle, for making this such a high priority and continuing the collaboration with all these different organizations throughout the county. And then, secondly, the items 22 through 26 are these partnership dollars with Lincoln Heights, Wyoming, Mount Healthy, Woodlawn, and Merrimott. Again, just want to highlight the partnerships there. It's really important, I think, to us and to these communities that we continue to try to be as responsive as possible to some of the finance needs out in the community for them to thrive and create economic development opportunities for themselves. So I'm really excited about these partnership dollars. That's all I have.
I make a motion to approve by leave.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
I make a motion to go in and check on the sets. 12122B4 to the special action bargaining and 12122GA to consider or negotiate for economic help.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.